Oh yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Annette?
Just let them know.
Open? I would like to call the regular meeting of the Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor Agency, Successor Agency, and City Council to order. Deputy City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Zamora. Mayor Protem Rounds. Mayor Osarno.
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only for those that are here to make a public comment. You will have an opportunity once the deputy city clerk announces your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members wishing to speak?
No members. Nobody wishing to speak.
I will now close the public comments. Closed session, item numbers one through six. I would like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, at this time the City Council will recess into closed session to discuss items one through six as posted on today's agenda. All members are present for discussion of these items. Thank you.
We will now recess to closed session. We will reconvene in the meeting after this closed session to hear the report from the city attorney and continue the rest of the meeting.[140.44][142.11](Music)
Fernando. Are they coming? You guys don't have to answer, we already answered for you guys.
We'll answer for you.
Appreciate it. You guys ready? I would like to reconvene the meeting, City Attorney, is there any closed session report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The record should reflect that the City Council recessed in the closed session to discuss the six items posted on tonight's agenda. With respect to item number one, threat to public services or facilities, the City Council received a briefing from the City Manager. There's nothing further to report on that item. With respect to items two through six, the City Council received a briefing from those indicated on the agenda. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now continue with the regular meeting. I would like to call upon Mayor Protem Rounds to lead us in today's invocation. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I would like to now call upon the youth leadership to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hello, everyone. I want to ask you to place your right hand over your heart and place the flag. And ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Can you guys please say your name with school and a little bit about yourselves?
Yes. Hi, I'm Audrey Perez, I go to Santa Fe High School. I am in 11th grade and I am currently involved in the YLC in Avid.
Hi, my name is Angelica Gamboa and I am a ninth grader and I go to Santa Fe High School. And my sport... And my sport is tennis. It's really fun.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to introductions. I would like to introduce the following representatives from the chamber. Mark Gutierrez, Gilmore Automotive Group, Mark. And the one and only Kathy Fink, SFS Chamber President. Next, we're going to move on to presentations. Best of Santa Fe Springs. I would like to call upon Public Information Officer Raylene Barazza.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno and members of the City Council. Quarterly, the City Council holds a special citizen recognition program called the Best of SFS to express gratitude to individuals that have made a positive impact in Santa Fe Springs. This evening, we celebrate the incredible achievement of Coach Ryan Bateman, Santa Fe High School's head football coach, who this past September was named the Los Angeles Chargers Week Two Coach of the Week for Los Angeles County. This recognition speaks to his dedication, leadership, and commitment not only to his players, but to our entire community. Under Coach Bateman's guidance, the Santa Fe Chiefs have demonstrated exceptional teamwork, resilience, and sportsmanship. Coach Bateman's passion for football and helping young athletes grow both on and off the field is truly inspiring. In 2023, he was hired as the head football coach, taking over a program that was 5-45 over the previous five years. Under Coach Bateman's leadership for his first season, the football team finished the season with a 9-4 record and a trip to the CIF Southern Section semifinals. This season, the Chiefs are currently 5-2. This award is a reflection of his hard work and I'm sure only the beginning of great things to come for Santa Fe's football program. Congratulations, Coach Bateman, on this well-deserved honor. We are all so proud of you and cannot wait to see what lies ahead for the team and yourself for the remainder of the season. Congratulations.
You don't sit down, you gotta come up here, buddy. Well, bring her in. Juanita cries all the time, it's okay. Congratulations, sir. Let's take a picture. That's all right, Juanita, stay. Here, give me the coffee.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Thank you. I'll take a picture with all of them. Monica and Craig, Craig, Monica.
Jay was slipping a little bit.
Not bad.
That's from Jay.
Yeah, how am I gonna see now? How are you gonna take a picture with these balloons? See? No sympathy from you. Ah, hold on. Oh, here, you want the balloons? Aw, ain't the first time a woman cried.
All right, three, two, one.
Thank you. Daddy, you want the balloons? Don't forget the coffee. Coach, don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. He's on his way out, but you can catch him. So, I just want to congratulate you again on an accomplishment. You know, Santa Fe's always had a great tradition in football and we did have a little rough time there for a while, but you have brought the tradition back to Santa Fe High. You've brought the Chieftain pride back and it's not just a football team, it's what you instill in your young men playing. And that's what they're gonna remember you and the football team forever. And you're building a lot of character in your young men and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations and go Chieftains.
Coach Bateman, Coach Bateman, real quick.
Don't go all the way out yet.
Ryan.
Ryan? You're not done yet. Tight school, until we let you out, you can't go yet.
We got a lot of space out there. Look at her, she's coming to celebrate now.
Nice. Yeah.
For those of you guys who don't know, Coach Bateman's been at Santa Fe High School for a number of years. I remember way back when we started off and I was freshman coaching you and coaching JV and the man still has the same intensity. Like, you know, when it comes to the kids and what he sacrifices, the time that he sacrifices away from his daughter and his wife, I mean, being a coach, you put in what, about six, seven hour days and stuff like that and makes it real difficult. So, seeing Coach Bateman finally take over Santa Fe High School, he's got that good old grit from the Coach Mawsted days and that's who we learned from. And I know that's who you, I mean, you're your own person now, but I know Coach Mawsted would be looking down on you, be very proud of you, man. You know, once a chief, always a chief brother.
I just want to say congratulations, we all love our Chiefs and from what I've heard about you and you come back and you do this and make us, we're winning, we're having a good time. The kids' morale is up and I just wanted to say congratulations. We hope to see lots of wins and I know we will. Thank you.
Coach, you know what makes a big difference is when we see your players at Starbucks, when you see your players in the street and they have the Santa Fe shirt of football and the respect these kids have now. For a while, that was lost and you would see, oh, it's a football player, then you would hear them. You brought that respect back to football and you brought back that, when you wear that shirt, it means something. And thank you, it says a lot with the leadership and thank you so much for taking this on. Thank you for your wife and your daughter for being there, letting him, you know, do what he's doing for the school and for all the kids. So, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
For me, you know, I'm a huge supporter of you. I know we talk a lot about Mawsted and the shoes you have to fill, but I think your shoes you have to fill are your own. I think the legacy that he had is his, the legacy you're bringing is yours. So, you take that and you run with what you're doing, sir, because you're doing a great job with these kids. You're doing a great job with our community and I thank you for everything you do. Craig, I want to thank you for entrusting in him to becoming the head coach because I know it was a task and thank you. And I think we're on the right path in the city and in the schools. So, thank you, guys, and you're bringing, you know, value back to the football that we didn't have for a long time. So, thank you and getting these kids out there again. Thank you. So, good luck. Now, school's out. You can go now. If you want, you can stay too if she wants. Nice, come on up.
The balloons are for her, not for you, though.
All right, next, State of the City sponsor recognition. I would like to call upon Public Information Officer Raylene Barazza again.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we want to take a moment to formally recognize and thank the generous sponsors who made this year's State of the City address a great success. Their contributions totaled $39,500 in donations and played a pivotal role in bringing our community together for this important event. We are fortunate to have partners who share in our vision for Santa Fe Springs and demonstrate their commitment to our city's future through their support. On behalf of the City Council and the entire community, I extend our heartfelt gratitude to all the sponsors. Your partnership is invaluable and we look forward to continuing to work together to strengthen and uplift the city of Santa Fe Springs. Now, at this time, I would like to call up the following 2024 State of the City sponsors up to the dais to be recognized. We do have several sponsors that were unable to attend, but we wanted to recognize everyone this evening. So, first, our platinum sponsors, we have TransTech Engineering.
Guys, we'll take a picture right here? In the middle.
All right, ready, three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Bridgeland Resources LLC. And next, our gold sponsors, we have Goodman, Tangram, Atkore, and The Ordnance Company. And CenterPoint.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
You stand wherever you want, don't worry.
Three, two, one.
Thank you again.
And for our silver sponsors, we have OMLO Law.
You can go around that way. You'll get it. You can stand in the front though. Yeah, I thought you wanted to stand right here next to us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll buy your nose some. No, you're fine, don't worry about it, I'm used to it.
Farmers and Merchants Bank, who I don't believe is here. CRNR Inc., Environmental Services. Nationwide Environmental Services. And we have The Whole Child and The Richmond Group. And unable to join us this evening, the remainder of the silver sponsors are EPD Solutions. Oh, you are here? Oh, sorry about that. Creative Package, McHahan Inc. and Almonte RV. Mike Thompson RV. And Chick-fil-A. And now for our bronze sponsors, we have Connor Reeves of Newmark. Manett Phelps and Phillips LLP. And we have IBE.
Yeah, he should have just came out. No, you're good.
Three, two, one.
Thank you, sir.
Gilmore Auto Group.
Yeah, you gotta come up, buddy. Stand wherever.
Thank you.
And the last I don't believe are here, we have Centrus and Global IT Communications. And that concludes the presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Before we get going on the next one, I want to introduce, and I'm sorry that we didn't do this prior, our Whittier Union School Board Superintendent Monica, our Santa Fe High School Principal Craig Campbell and then Josefina Cancola, our school board member. So, welcome. Where is he? Oh, Sokoloff, he's hiding back there. Our Lake Center Principal Sokoloff, Mr. Sokoloff, and our Superintendent Jonathan Vasquez. Sorry. Before we get on the next one too, I just want to say thank you to all of our sponsors. I know a lot of them are leaving, but it was a great event. Thank you, guys, for what you guys do, you know, it was an awesome turnout. I just want to say thank you, guys, while you guys are here. So, thank you for the sponsors and the support. Next, the Red Ribbon Week, I would like to call upon Parks and Recreation Manager Rick Brown.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. It's always nice to come back and be part of the Red Ribbon proclamation presentation. Just to give a little brief background of what the Red Ribbon campaign is. Red Ribbon Week is a national campaign to commemorate the memory of slain DEA agent Enrique Camarena. It's now grown to an annual national event which serves to educate students and their families on the living, drug-free, healthy lifestyles. The Santa Fe Springs residential and business communities, along with the city and local school districts, work together to promote their commitment to a drug-free community. The National Red Ribbon Campaign is slated for October 23rd through the 31st annually. Here in Santa Fe Springs, we've started our Red Ribbon Campaign by recognizing our contest winners with banners along the parade route during the whole month of October. So, if you've noticed, along the parade route, all of the banners are posted of all of our winners from grades K through 12, three per grade level, all the schools in the area. On Monday, October 21st, we'll be visiting all the elementary schools and we'll highlight the week on October 23rd with our annual Red Ribbon Parade. The parade theme, which was selected from thousands of entries nationwide as part of a contest, is Life's a Movie: Film Drug Free. We have some special guests here from each of our school districts to accept the proclamation. So, if I could have them come up, we'll start with Whittier Union High School District and I know some of them we just recognized, but they deserve more recognition. Whittier Union High School District Superintendent Dr. Monica Oviedo. We have Whittier Union High School District Board Vice President Josefina Cancola. And we have Santa Fe High School Principal Craig Campbell. And we have Santa Fe High School Principal Craig Campbell. Thank you. And next up, we'll go to Little Lake City School District. We have Little Lake City School District Superintendent Jonathan Vasquez. And we have Lake Center Principal Jack Sokolov. Thank you, gentlemen. And do we have anyone from Los Tejos School District? It appears that Los Tejos School District was unable to join us this evening, but we will get that proclamation to them. And before, I definitely have to mention a big thank you to Paul Braschah. He's leading the charge this year logistically for the Red Ribbon Parade. I've had the good fortune of being the one that has led it for the last, I don't know, 10, 12 years or so. And Paul's taking the lead on that, along with the Whole Parks and Recreation Team. So, we're really excited about an awesome parade on the 23rd. So, everyone, please wear red and join us. The parade is scheduled to start at 9:15, and we're gonna have a good time, as we do every year. Thank you all very much. That's an idea. It'll be good. Yes, it will. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for inviting us today to provide an update on the services we provide for this community and the development project we have in this city. If you can have the presentation up, please. Right. So, next, please. All right. The Whole Child, we are a 67-year-old organization providing services in all of southeast LA County. We provide mental health, family housing, parent enrichment, nutrition education services to this community. We empower families towards healing, health, and homes. This is a quick summary of our impact for fiscal year 2023, 2024, last year. In total, we serve over almost 8,000 families. That is quite an accomplishment for The Whole Child. We actually doubled the number of families we serve from the previous fiscal year. Next. And this is specifically for the city of Santa Fe Springs. We really wanted to present the results here. We serve a total of 471 families in this city with over 200 children of that. You can see the spread of that. Forty-five families receive mental health. Fifty families receive family housing with 99% permanency rate, meaning we kept them housed. Also, something that we didn't include there, but we disbursed almost $200,000 in financial assistance to these families to keep them housed and bring them from the street or the cars where they live. We also had 370 families receive nutrition education and physical activity education. All right, next. Then, this is the development that we've been working on for the last five years, and we are finally getting to that finish line. We are very excited to be able to bring this project to this community. It is on the corner of Lakeland and Laurel, and it's an entire campus that will have three very distinct areas. The one that The Whole Child is developing is the Interim Housing and Support Service Center, in which we're gonna be able to provide interim housing to families experiencing homelessness. This facility is going to have 19 apartments with a total of 40 bedrooms. And because it is interim housing, families could share apartments, so we could, at any given time, serve 40 families. And these families are expected to live with us for around 120 days. So, we expect the units to turn four times a year, making this a total of 100, over 120 families served by this facility when it's open. That's 120 families with all the children that they come. The average family size that we serve is 3.5 children. So, that's a lot of children that are going to be living in a wonderful place instead of in the car or in the couch somewhere while their parents are trying to look for a stable housing. The facility will have a support service center on the first floor that is going to be open not only to the residents of this campus, but to the entire community. And we are going to bring our mental health services, employment services, housing navigation, parent enrichment, nutrition education, yoga classes, budgeting classes, all sorts of great things for the community. And as we work more with the community on the needs for these kind of activities, then we'll bring more services to it. Next. These are the eligibility requirements for the service provided. For the interim housing units, the family needs to be literally homeless, meaning either living on the street or living in their car or a place that is not meant for habitation, you know, on the back of the Walmart or things like that. They have to have a child or a woman that is pregnant, because The Whole Child only works with families that are experiencing homelessness. So, that is the criteria. The Community Wellness Center, again, is going to be open to the entire community. For mental health services, they do have to be medical, enrolled, or uninsured, and meet medical necessity, meaning that they experiencing behavioral challenges or signs of trauma. For parent enrichment, all parents of children up to 4-year-old. Nutrition education is open to everybody. And cultural and seasonal celebrations and other activities, wellness activities, are open also to everybody in the community. So, that's why we so appreciate this opportunity to come here and present, because we want to start getting the word out. We were very quiet, because, you know, with construction, you never know what kind of delays you're gonna face. You don't want to be making promises and showing that the facility is gonna come online when delays might come. But now, we are there, and we are planning to open it in January for the facility. So, we really want the community to huddle around this facility to make sure that people know of the services, because, again, it is not just for the residents. It's for the community here in Santa Fe Springs. Next. This is a quick video, a phone video of the construction. That was the empty lot. So, we really wanted to have this memory of this project, because it has been quite an enterprise, not only for The Whole Child and our partners, but for the city as well. This was a big gamble for the city to bring this kind of facility to this community. And we are very grateful for their foresight and leadership in combating family homelessness and also bringing affordable housing to the community, which is so needed. So, again, thank you so much to this council and other previous council members that have been there since the inception of this project. These are some photos of about a month ago. So, they're all, we are actually much farther along. We are now at 87% completion. So, we are right there. Next. Again, this is just some different views of the project. We already pour the parking lot and all that. So, these are about a month old. But, again, very excited to be in the project to the community. It's been a labor of love, I think, for everybody. Again, not only for us, but for the city, and thank you for the planning department, Public Works, everybody that has had a hand in bringing this project to reality. And this is timeline to completion. We complete hard construction at the end of this month. Then, November will be final permits and certificate of occupancy. Yes. You're all going to help us to get there with the certificate of occupancy. And then, furnishes moving in in preparation for the families, and then, finally, open on 2025. We're starting to plan our grand opening, and you will all hear in due time of when that's going to happen. And it's going to be a great celebration of this joint effort between the city and the many other funders that we have and the organizations that are part of this great project. That's it for me. And if you want to learn more about this initiative, please always just email us at twcinfo@thewholechild.org. Call our number. We're there to talk. When it's time to the facility to open, there's going to be a lot of information, town halls, mailers that are gonna go around for this community, so they really know what to expect and what to do. We're gonna be working with the school that is right across to ensure the children that are gonna be living in this facility integrate into the community. And with that, I would like to introduce our development partner, Rick Westberg from The Richmond Group, who is going to present the other phase of the project, the Affordable Housing Units. Thank you.
Gotta adjust us up here a little. Wish I had gone before Constanza. She's already showed me up even before I've started. Mayor, Mayor Protem, esteemed council, and staff, let's not forget staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. This project's been a long time in coming. We are now in the construction phase, which is fun to see the sticks and bricks finally, finally taking place. As a reminder, I'm here to give you a brief update on the balance of the site. So, The Whole Child's project is there at the hard corner of Lakeland and Laurel, and is interim housing. And the other buildings you see there along Lakeland and deeper into the site plan are apartment units. And not to be forgotten, I'd like to mention our third partner, Habitat for Humanity, which I'm told should break ground shortly on their housing across the street from Lakeland, which is just off of the visual there in front of us all. You can go to the next slide, please. Just briefly on the apartments, it's The Richmond Group that's sort of leading the efforts. I will say that both Habitat and The Whole Child are part of the ownership, so it is a partnership of all three of us. The Richmond Group, we develop housing. We've been doing it since 1986. Our DNA is in the development of tax credit, affordable housing, government-regulated housing. We've developed housing, or we finance a lot of this housing in nearly every state in the country. And we're a vertically integrated group. We develop it, we manage it, we asset-manage a large portfolio. You can go to the next slide. So, we have completed nearly 26,000 units that we've built on our own and invested in many more than that. We have development offices across the country. You can go to the next slide. So, as a reminder, here in Santa Fe Springs, we're building 102, what we call intergenerational apartment units. Those are apartments for both families and seniors. We have 50 senior homes. Most of those are one bedrooms. Forty-seven of those are one bedrooms. And three of those are set aside for two bedrooms. We have 51 family units. Many of those are two and three bedrooms, 23 two-bedrooms and 28, I'm sorry, 23 two-bedrooms and 28 three-bedrooms. And a component of this project is set aside for permanent supportive housing for the homeless. So, there is a storyline here that, you know, people could enter The Whole Child's property at the hard corner and stabilize, and then, one day, find themselves in permanent housing, which is what we're building in terms of rental units. The last piece of that is that theoretically, they could find themselves later in Habitat for Humanity's for-sale affordable housing, which would be across on Lakeland. We have 107 parking spaces. We have multiple common areas. Some set aside for families, some set aside for seniors, fitness, multipurpose room. We'll be providing social services on-site, certainly for the permanent supportive population. We're serving incomes from 30% AMI all the way up to 70% AMI. So, we call this a mixed-income project as well, since we're serving such a broad swath of incomes. When you take into account that the average income in LA County is now over $100,000, it gives you some perspective on the population that we're targeting. You can go to the next slide. So, this just gives you a brief breakdown of the units and the different area median incomes that we're targeting here. So, you see there totaling, we'll have 56 units at 30% AMI, 24 units at 60% AMI, and 21 units at 70% AMI. A lot of times, at these incomes, these are people in our community that are working daily jobs, and many of those starting out in their careers benefiting from this affordable housing. And then, the matrix below gives you some insights into, you know, what those incomes actually are. So, a one-bedroom, an income would range from roughly $33,000 a year annually to 77, going all the way up to the three-bedrooms, where a family income could range from $42,000 to almost $100,000. Next slide, please. So, this gives you an idea of this, a reminder of the site plan of the family units there along Lakeland and another family building at the top of the site, and the senior building off to the left. Central to the site is our leasing and common areas where you would come into the site. The site's fully securitized and gated, keyfobbed. I think it would be a nice, safe place to live. Next slide. So, here are some progress photos. I think Constanza's photos were a little bit better. We're about 80% through construction. We're dried-in now. So, that means we're getting started on the site work, which you can see the soil there in the picture. We should be all paved by the end of this month. We've been playing catch-up to The Whole Child. But it sounds like they plan to move people in in January, and we hope to be complete in February. So, it's dovetailing nicely. We'll be leasing up together, creating this new community. So, I did mention that we're in the units now, completing the finishes, and we hope to have power release within five to seven weeks. So, these are still, you know, these are the units now that we're putting in the flooring and putting in the countertops and so on and so forth. And here are our guys working with the HVAC systems. So, who doesn't like a good construction update? So, I did include a couple slides on, you know, some of the basic finishes, the look, the feel of the units. They're all very durable. We, you know, we hope to be here for a long time. We'll continue our ownership. We're not going away. And when you want to collaborate in the future, you know who to call. Still be here. I don't know if that's the last slide. Okay, I think this is our last slide, so we hope to be done in February. I will say, upcoming, we have a property management plan and a tenant selection plan. These are very detailed plans. Our business, we operate in a very regulated space, and we plan to share these plans with the city for feedback, collaboration, get your input. There's a lot to discuss in terms of how we find these people, how we prioritize these people. We've talked to the city in the past about a veterans' preference, which we know is a requirement, and working to find and house people in the city of Santa Fe Springs, which we are committed to. So, we hope we'll be sharing these plans with you soon. This is an opportunity to work with local resources and get your feedback, and we're excited. We've got, you know, four or five months now to prepare for our lease-up and getting people in the units.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you have a question?
It's great to see all this happening here in our city. I, I know that having some of our school districts here, they have programs called FRC, Family Resource Center. So getting together with them, it, it deals with their homeless population and I'm glad they're shaking their heads yes. So take for instance, from their standpoint, who would they contact or how do they get ahold of a person? So they can do their best to get their, their, their students and student families, you know, situated in, in your guys' facilities.
Sure. I'll take this one. They can, we already have close relationships with this school districts. We do work. We either have our mental health therapies already located at some of the schools. And we do have relationships with their different programs, with their McKinny Vento as well, in which we are already helping them rehouse some of their families. So their, their relationship is already there and, and the connections have already been made. Yeah.
And then my other question, it has to do with seniors. You know, we're struggling right now. I mean, not just in our city, but a lot of seniors, I mean, when it comes to, they, they have a steady income and, you know, we have landlords that just keep raising rates and just pushing them out. And it's just sad to see because there's not anybody there to fight for them. So take for instance, if we have senior citizens that are looking to get into you guys' facility, how do they go around it? Because they do need that extra support. So I know we have our social service center, but who can actually be the mediator or individuals to speak on their behalf just to help them? Because we do have individuals that speak different languages. So how, how do you guys plan to, to, to work with them?
All good questions and things that we can include, by the way, in our property management plan. So this is an opportunity to include all of this detail. We, we have our own property management group that will be operating onsite and we have layers. The property management business is employee intensive. So we have layers of, of people that will be working onsite, regionals, VPs and oversight from above. And then of course, I'm always here. I, I start in the beginning and I, I never go away. In certain, we, we will be providing social services also onsite. So there's communication between our property management staff, which we like to say is good at maintaining the property, sticks and bricks, making the property look nice, those types of things. But then we collaborate with our social service providers who are actually providing these people with the services that they need. And for seniors, that could be anything from financial health and helping doing your taxes or getting, coordinating transportation for families. Those social services also include after school care for kids and things like that. In terms of the rent, I think it's 37 of the 50 senior residents will be set aside for homelessness or at risk of homelessness. So those 37 will have project based vouchers. Their rent will essentially be subsidized, if you will, by the county. For the remaining 13 units, you know, these are regulated rents and they're based on an income. So in theory, the, the rent should be, should reflect the fact that they can't afford it. And it's heavily subsidized if you were to compare it to a market rate rent. So that's how we typically would handle that.
What is that rent amount approximately?
I think, I think it was on that, one of those slides.
1350, 1550 and 1850.
There it is. So for a one bedroom rent, it would range from 780 to 1820.
For single.
It's hard to believe that that's a subsidized rent these days.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's going to be expensive, but that's subsidized. Yeah.
And that's why I bring it up because we have places like Fulton Wells, the Mobile Home Parks, you know, can't even think of some of the others right now. But there, you know, we get a lot of complaints. I think all of us on the dais over here get constant calls how we can get involved. Because, you know, they have a, a contract, but it almost seems like the landlords are always looking to breach that contract because they can get a tenant who's going to pay two to three times more money or market value. So, and we just want to make sure whatever we can do to open it up to them. Because they are probably on the verge of, you know, of being homeless. So, you know, whatever we can do to get into those facilities and maybe work something out to, to see who's, who's struggling.
If I may, I think that it's important to note that both The Whole Child facility and the apartments, because of the funding that they have, we have used restrictions for many, many years. So unlike other developments that might have already reached those restrictions or were never subject to those restrictions and can change the population that they serve, we can't. It's what like 55 years, 50 years? It's a lot of years in which we cannot change the use and the, and the, and the kind of population.
Covenant is probably 15 to 25.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 55 year use restriction. Frankly, it'll always be affordable. The intention is not that in the 56th year, this automatically changes. What typically ends up happening is around 20 or 25 years in, the project needs to be rehabbed. And then you put a little bit, we, you know, the, it gets refinanced and then there's another 15, five year covenant. So in practice, that's typically what we see. The rents would be regulated that whole time. That doesn't mean that the rents don't go up. But they go up, you know, at a starting point and there's a, it's a formulaic government increase. And to be honest, we're just trying to stay ahead of the operating costs. The operating costs on many of our apartments in the last two years have gone up over 40%. Insurance has been a big dig. So really, these projects are engineered to just stay healthy and, and not be, not run in the red. Theoretically, that's, expenses are going up and rents are going up.
What, I, I got a question. What's the closest facility that mirrors this type of campus that we have here?
Campus that has the three components that we have, that has the interim housing, the permanent housing and the for sale, doesn't exist.
So we're setting a trend for cities that?
It is a model and that we, we want to make sure that we do all we can to promote that model. Again, it is, it was very fortunate to be able to find this lot that has this one lot in which we could develop phase one and phase two, and then the lot right across in which we can develop the town, the townhomes. But it is a model that we do want to push for, for other cities to follow.
I, I hope they do because it's definitely a need and we've definitely stepped up to, to help this happen. So I, I just want to say, you know, I think this, what started almost this meeting when I was mayor in 2018 is when we all came to come together as a team. And now it's ending as maybe in the mayor and me leaving.
Beginning again.
But I, I, I just want to, this is something that I think is great for us because we get zero money for homeless people from the, from the county. And we're here to help a situation that doesn't affect us the way it affects a lot of other cities around us. But it needs to be dealt with. And we put our money where our mouth is or our land. And we're okay with it because we know it's going to help the families and people in our community and surrounding communities. And we just hope other cities do what we've done because that's what we've always been, a trend setting city. So we want to set the, the mark very high and hopefully other cities will follow us in that. So thank you guys.
I'll add to that, that while you might not get money from the county to, you know, help the immediate need when we all see people out on the streets, projects like these are a really ingenious way to leverage the county. Because it's the county that's paying the rent. It's the county that's providing those social services. And at least for the apartments, the county also kicked in an additional subsidy. So the commitment by the city of Santa Fe Springs, while fundamental and really the linchpin that made all of this come together, it did allow you all to leverage county resources that you might not otherwise have gotten.
I had a, I had a question. How long does a family, are they able to live there?
Constanza's going to have a different answer for The Whole Child property. But for our properties, the intention is that there's no, they wouldn't move out. They would qualify on their income. And if at some point they are quote, over income, there is a grace period. But if, at some point, if you're over income for long enough, then it's deemed that you, you know, are no longer subject to being in affordable housing. So you can move on. But there's, you know, no one gets shown the door.
Good, good. For the interim housing side, the goal is to move families into permanent housing at 120 days. Now, not every family is ready to move into permanent housing at 120 days. But that's the average that we want to keep them. But then again, no one is kicked out because it's 120 days. It's about them being ready to move into permanent housing. And being ready means you have a stable job that will allow you to cover the rent of wherever you're going. Your, you know, we stabilize the entire family. Your kids are in proper schooling. Your medical health, mental health are in a good place. That's stabilizing a family. That's why we have a 99% permanency rate, meaning only 1% of the families we house, we permanently house, fall back into homelessness. Because we focus on the entire family stabilization before we move them into permanent housing.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. See you guys later. Thank you. Next, changes to the agenda. Mr. Bobbadiya, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes tonight, Mayor.
Next, public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Once the deputy city clerk announces your name. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor. First, I'd like to call upon Jorge Morales.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jorge Morales. I'm a Whittier resident. Wanted to do this from my heart, but had to take some notes because my mind isn't as sharp as it used to be. I wanted to take a moment to publicly and personally thank the city manager Renee Babadia for essentially saving my life. On August 22nd, I woke up and I wasn't feeling very well. My right hand wasn't cooperating with me. Neither was my brain. I had something that I would compare to maybe dyslexia. I couldn't put my thoughts into paper or text. I couldn't read or write. And, but because I'm crazy, I still went to work. I am a consultant. I represent Contract Cities. I went to the Contract Cities City Managers event that was hosted here at Geezer's where Renee was supposed to speak. And I've known Renee for many years. I used to work at the county. And he comes up to me. He knows I've been battling cancer for a couple of years. And he said, how's your health? And I said, um, not good. I said, I can't feel my right hand and I can't think straight. And he says, come with me to the station. I said, no, bro, you're about to speak. Don't worry about it. I'll take care of it. Don't worry about it. And he says, no, you're coming with me. And he walks me out of the Geezer's restaurant and we're walking out of the restaurant and he made a phone call to his captain. I heard him say, Captain, I'm going to be at the station in three minutes with a friend. I think he's having a stroke. And I had no idea. I hadn't even given it any thought. I didn't know what it was. But I'll never forget that phone call. I'll never forget those steps, walking out of Geezer's. And so we get to the fire station and sure enough, they start, you know, putting all these things on me. And essentially they just said, look, your vitals are fine. You're not having a stroke. Your, your vitals are fine, but you're clearly not fine. We're going to, you should go to the emergency room at that moment. And ambulance shows up and they take me to the, to the, to the PIH Whittier. A few hours later, the cancer, the doctor, neurosurgeon comes in and says, you've been battling cancer for a couple of years. I said, yeah. He's like, well, it's moved up to your brain. A couple of days later, I had, I don't know if they call it open brain surgery, but I had brain surgery to remove a tumor that had been growing in my brain. And all this because Renee took action. And I say this as a joke. And for those of you who know me, you know, I'm very like cool about this stuff. Then the night before, I told my best friend Marcel Rodardi at another Contract Cities event that I wasn't feeling well. My arm was numb. And he's like, oh, you probably just slept on your arm. And Renee could have done the same thing. He could have said, oh man, I hope things work out for you. I'm about to go speak. Good luck. But he didn't. He took action. And I know my time's almost up. A fire chief, there's a firefighter named Velasco, great guy. He went in the car and the ambulance with me and he was talking with me. And he said, hey, you're, you're a mayor. I was a mayor and council member in Southgate. And he started talking to me and consoling me, you know, distracting me. And I, I know my time's up, but I just wanted to say thank you, Renee.
Oh, hey, you finished what you gotta do. Don't worry about the time.
I appreciate you. Thank you, brother. I just wanted to say, you know, as a former council member, mayor, I know that they only come up to say when things go wrong. And I just wanted to share that sometimes things go right with your fire department. They all treated me with a lot of respect. We just dropped off a bunch of crumble cookies. I know they want to stay healthy, but, I mean, I know. But Renee, I have a note from my wife and my kids. I have a nine year old and a five year old that are eternally grateful for you for taking action, brother. I appreciate you and I love you, man. I'll never forget you.
Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good job, sir. Good night.
Mayor, next we have A.J. Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm here tonight to bring some concerns from residents right here in the city about our traffic. And due to lack of business, some of our meetings have been canceled. I've brought some of these concerns up in our last traffic meeting. This one has been canceled for this month and next month would be the third month. Not knowing if we'll have a meeting or not. But first is Telegraph and Orundee, the light sequences coming off of Houghton. Residents north of Telegraph are saying that it is jam packed, that they don't feel that the lights are going fast enough for them to proceed. And where it says, keep clear on Telegraph, right off of Houghton, it is blocked, congested. Residents can't get into that spot. I've been told that the city is looking at hiring a firm to come out and check and survey if these lights are operating the, the way that they should be. Second is Florence, the bridge at midnight. A resident comes at, off of work around midnight, makes a left hand turn onto Orundee. He says the light's taking anywhere between three to four minutes. He doesn't want to risk getting a ticket, but he asked if somebody can look into that also. I was there last night around 8:30. It seemed to be going fine. I don't know if at a different time, if the lights are switched off at a different sequence. Next is Lakeland Villa Seniors. They're concerned about resident, of traffic that comes in and they're doing U-turns inside the facility where they live. And a lot of these residents are on walkers and scooters. They are going back and forth and they're afraid to get hit. So I've spoke about with 10 of these residents there. Lastly is Santa Guturta School. At right about time that they're going to get out, and I have video if anybody would like to see it, from Charlesworth, it is backed up. Also on Albertis, when you make a right hand turn into Charlesworth, and cars are double parking. And they're not having the cars running. They are double parked. And you have just one way to get in and cars are coming back and forth. So that's a, another major concern right there. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Mr. Bobbadiya.
Mayor, if I can address the Orundee Telegraph. It's a, there's currently a Caltrans project that's going on. It's a three year project. Caltrans on the 605 is doing a lot of pavement replacement from pretty much the 105 all the way to the 10 freeway. So from now, for the next three years, they've changed all our light sequences, north, southbound, east, west, to try to get some of the traffic that's getting, that they're detouring off the freeway, on Orundee and through that construction site. So we're going to see for the next three years, unfortunately, a lot of delays in those intersections. We've asked Caltrans to try to give us a better timeline of when this is going to happen. They're kind of hopscotching, so they're not sticking to any schedule. They're kind of just moving around. So that's going to be a while. So we're, we're closely working with them. We, we understand some of the challenges we have also with some of the interconnection of those lights, Caltrans to city lights. And that's something we're working with them as well to see if they're interested in partnering with us with an infrastructure project to kind of tie those lights together. So it is definitely working.
That's actually good to know because some of these residents, they ask me and I don't want to be like going on three months with not an answer. So I know that you guys could answer it faster than, than we could.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. And we'll, we'll try to. And we'll try to put something out on social media and our website to, once we get a little bit more clarity of the construction project, we'll put some more information out.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you, A.J. Above and beyond. Uh, anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have Irma Witron next.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. My name's Irma Witron. I live at 10726 Lake Center Park Lane. I've been a resident of Lake Center Park Lane for many years, along with my family and my children. Some of you may know, we've been living through quite a bit of a nightmare over the last two years. Just think about this, if somebody told you that for the next two or three years, you would be living in a situation where at 2:00 in the morning, you would wake up to trucks, chains, idling. Another two nights, you would have idling right outside of your bender window of trucks. The next day, you would probably have big clouds of dust over your entire house, going through your windows where you'd have to close them, repeat over and over and over and over. And if they told you that you were gonna live like this for the next two or three years, would you think that would be a pleasant way to live with your family? My answer is no. I'm here because I've pleaded with a lot of you to help my family and I live through the situation of the Malia Homes Project at 11733 Florence Avenue. The reason I know this address is because I have reported late-night construction disturbances because of the construction project happening at those homes to Whittier Police Department. I've written numerous emails along with my husband. And it's never-ending. I understand that the folks in charge of the construction project don't really seem to care about the peace of mind that comes with living in your home and being able to open the windows, sleep through the night, not having to be worried if you have your phone ready so you can document it, so you can send it to the city, download the timestamp app so that you have proof that it happened at that hour on that day. It's a nightmare. I know a lot of you have offered to help us in many different ways and we're really looking for a permanent solution, not only for us, but for the future residents of Downey. Our municipal code, I'm sorry, of Santa Fe Springs. Our municipal code here in the city of Santa Fe Springs is such that seven days a week, someone can have construction from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It doesn't matter if it's a holiday, if it's a Sunday. We've lived through it, holiday, Sunday, Monday, construction nailing going on. Sundays, construction, activity, we've had a paint overspray happen at our home. Again, you name it, we've had it at our house. And some of you may say, why is it only the Witrons that are worried about this? I think because we're the bravest family to be able to talk about this and be able to come to these meetings and not get tired of ringing you up, of texting you, of calling you and pleading you to please help us, not only in this current situation, but to provide a permanent solution for the residents of Santa Fe Springs. Thank you for your time.
Next, Mayor, is Iztlanan Bernal.
I just came, I know I only have three minutes and I, I'm not, I'm very new to Santa Fe Springs. I grew up in Norwalk and lived in Downey. I was displaced as a graduate student. And I transferred from Downey to Santa Fe Springs and lived in Placita for the last year. I am a Section 8 recipient. I was displaced after my rent was paid. The owners decided they just wanted the unit back. Most of you have probably seen me outside the city hall or possibly in front of the fire department. I'm an unemployed social worker. I haven't been able to get back on my feet. On September 25th, I was, I displaced again from sleeping in the back of the city hall. I chose the city, the city hall because of the way I was displaced. There were about eight police officers that showed up at my door, pushed through my door at 7:00 in the morning. Three of them had guns and the rest didn't. I did some research and three, those three officers were revoked police officers. I have, I was actually sleeping in a sleeping bag in back of the city hall. I do still have a voucher, I'm looking for a one-bedroom. It's just myself, my children are grown. And I was approached by a couple of public safety officers and they were running around the corner and I was half asleep. I didn't really know why I felt startled. But nevertheless, they called for backup and there were more police that came in Whittier Police Department vehicles. I was restrained. I was in a threat to the police. I didn't, I didn't make a threat, but I was restrained for three and a half hours in handcuffs. I wasn't allowed to call my attorney and I do have an attorney. I wasn't allowed to call my parents or told why I was being restrained. I was first searched without a female police officer present. One of the officers, while I was in handcuffs, put his hand completely down my top, groping my chest, my front side and my backside. They didn't charge me with anything, but took me to College Hospital. And at that point, there were staff that met me out there. I have no record, criminal record ever. I've always worked with children since I was 19 years old. I've passed FBI checks. I've worked as an intern for Department of Children and Family Services and about 10 years for mental health in downtown L.A. I've serviced several colleges as a presenter of Indian Child Welfare. American Indian, my father's Mexican. I feel, I feel as though there's been, not only my civil rights have been violated, but my human rights as well. I was taken to College Hospital and they restrained me there, didn't tell me why. And I was out for five days. I woke up on my daughter's birthday on September 30th. My daughter was diagnosed with cancer a year ago. It's been trying not only for myself, but for my parents. It's very difficult when you service the public for a certain amount of years in mental health. You know this stuff as a professional. But when you're on the opposite side and your patient rights are being violated or your civil rights or your human rights, and in my case, I feel my human rights have been violated because I wasn't combative. I was upset after I was groped. In 2013, I serviced a family and for confidentiality reasons, I cannot disclose much information. But the sergeant was a sergeant, retired sergeant of Whittier Police Department. This is going to be very difficult for me. I'm gonna have to return to my former employer. I feel, he has showed up, he has stalked me in the last 13 years and I feel that he's using his influence. I don't feel that I was of any harm to anybody. In fact, there were very cordial people that have actually allowed me to take shower at the aquatic center and I appreciate that. Some of the fire department staff allowed me to sleep in front of the door. I was sexually assaulted at Placita.
You know, I gotta, I gotta.
That's why I was sleeping in areas where it's safe.
Ma'am, could I just, we wanted to hear the story. We have to get on with our council meeting, but I wanna get you help. So if we could maybe get her some right connections for some people. Maybe Maricela can talk to you after the council meeting. So we make sure we get you in the right position to get help and get you safe and get you back on your feet, so.
Yeah, that would be appreciative. I am in therapy at LA County DMH, but I have lost several telephones. People approach in the nighttime, they take my things while I'm asleep.
Well, wait till.
I just would like to impress upon each one of your hearts that there are issues with human trafficking in the city of Santa Fe Springs that I'm aware of. And I am gonna file a civil rights complaint. And if I have to take it up to the Supreme Court, I will. I feel like there's definitely a checks and balances that should be occurring. No citizen should be treated in that fashion whatsoever. I was in out of control, I didn't pose a threat to myself. And I was held 120 hours after 72 hours at the state hospital. I never, ever had a psych cold.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, you're, you're.
I'm hoping that.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Time is up.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that.
We're gonna have somebody.
I'm hoping that each one of you here, the need that's also happening in the riverbed. And I hope that you guys have more cultural sensitivity when you're dealing with people of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you. Staff communication. Mr. Bobbidi, do we have any staff communication?
Yes, we do. May I like to call up Gus Hernandez? He has several updates for us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Can I get the slides up, please? First item up tonight is the Fiesta de octubre, which will be held on Friday, excuse me, on Saturday and Sunday, October 19th and 20th, at Los Nettos Park. Saturday evening entertainment features Banda Cuisillos. And Sunday night entertainment features Pancho Barrasa. Both are big headliners in Mexican culture and we're very happy to have them here playing Santa Fe Springs. We're gonna have food trucks, beer garden, additional live entertainment, Kid Zone, and a ton of other activities as well for our community to enjoy, all free of charge. This is a partnership and collaboration with the Asociación de Jaliscienses Unidos en Acción, otherwise known as AHUA. And so on Saturday and Sunday evening, we're gonna brindar to AHUA and we're gonna have a great event. Next slide, please. The week after, on Saturday, October 26th, at Los Nettos Park again, we're gonna have our annual Halloween carnival. Featured this year is our costume parade beginning at 6:30. We're gonna have photo booths, games, crafts, staple. That has been a long tradition now in our community. Covington, Covington's Kids Corner, named after the late, great Dell Covington. We're gonna have a reptile show, food vendors. And all of the kids that show up for the costume parade will receive a custom Santa Fe Springs Halloween Parade medal. We also have medals for all dogs and cats that dress up as well. So we hope to see you there, Saturday, October 26th, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Los Nettos Park. And next slide. Finally, on November 11th, we are going to be having the first Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th here at the Plaza. We're gonna have a free pancake breakfast beginning at 8:00 a.m. Our ceremony will begin at 10:00 a.m. We have confirmed Bob Archuleta, Senator Bob Archuleta, as a guest speaker. We're gonna have some commemorative giveaways. This year, we also have a flyover confirmed, so we're really excited about that. We'll have these swing dolls that'll be entertaining the crowd. We'll have a brass band that'll also be playing. And then later tonight, on Consent Agenda, you have a resolution to begin the process for the city of Santa Fe Springs to be named a Purple Heart City. So we're really proud of that and we'll be unveiling that at the Veterans Day Ceremony.
I guess we also wanna thank Lee Squire for bringing this to the city, right?
Yes, yeah. Definitely wanna thank Lee Squire. He's been a proponent of this and we're certainly thankful for him for demonstrating us the way of how to apply it to be a Purple Heart City. So if he's listening out there, Lee Squire, thank you very much. That concludes my community updates.
Thank you, guys. Mayor, I'd also like to call Vince Velasco to give us an update on several projects.
Yes, thank you, sir. We have two slides for you tonight that highlight an excitement of new businesses. The first site is at the Gateway Plaza. It's the former Party City building. It'll be now occupied by Five Below, who opened earlier this month, and Wells Fargo, who intends to open in mid-2025. Next slide, please. The second exciting new business is at the Santa Fe Springs Plaza and it is Mr. Friesman. This is a long-awaited opening for the city and they're known for their loaded fries. So we look forward to welcoming all these new businesses to the city.
Long-awaited, you heard what he said, long-awaited. You've been waiting for this.
It's Healthy Fries, buddy, Sal.
Healthy.
Healthy Fries.
Vegetable oil.
That's how we got, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Oh, man. All right, next, old business. Item number 11, approval of facility use agreement with Enfuego, kids for athletic fields and facility improvements. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobbidi again.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is two, is one facility use agreement with Enfuego. As you know, Enfuego has been working closely with staff to look at how we can improve our Lake Center athletic fields and our Santa Fe Springs athletic fields. They've made a $500,000 commitment to date. We're looking at partnering with them in other places in the city to enhance our sports fields. So really excited to present to you this facility use agreement for your consideration. And we're available for any.
Any discussion?
I'd like to motion to approval of item number 11.
I'll move. I'll second. We have a motion by Martin, second by Rounds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Regular business, item number 12, replacement options for the Santa Fe Springs Orange mural at Heritage Park. I'd like to call upon Service Manager Edward Mares.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I stand before you today to just talk about replacement options for the Santa Fe Springs mural at Heritage Park. These options actually were presented and recommended by the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee. But before so, before I give you the options, I'd like to talk a little bit about the background of the mural itself. And the mural actually is on the canvas of the boxcar and that's the reason why you have the boxcar in front of you as well. So a little history of the boxcar, refrigerated boxcar. As you know, it's, it's, it's the part of the train exhibit at Heritage Park and the train depot there. In February of 1995, there was a proposed artwork depicting pastoral scene of orange groves with the background of mountainous terrain and the image of the Heritage Park pump house. Now, the reason the mural was actually painted on the boxcar at that time, that's what was promoted. It was just an example of how you promote the product that was in the refrigerated boxcar. In 2021, staff, we conducted a survey, an assessment of all the art pieces in the city in the effort to work on all our artwork and what needed restoration or work. At that time, we found that 40 to 50% of the actual mural had been cracking, peeling, fading. At the same time, what was even worse is that at that time, we determined that the structural integrity of the actual boxcar was beyond fixable. It had a lot of dry rot, termite damage, and only leaving us options of either removing the boxcar or seeking an alternative option with that. In February 2022, Public Works did a great job finding a contractor who could actually replicate the boxcar. And I believe you remember some of these photos from, from that time. Did an amazing job. The boxcar now sits before you with a picture to the right. That's how it currently looks and it replicates exactly how the original boxcar looked. During that time, though, the project did not include the replacement of mural, which then left a lot of discussion as it related to various options of do, how do we bring back this mural? Is there any appetite to continue with replicating the mural or other options? During the time that we knew the boxcar had to be completely rebuilt, I made contact, an effort to find the original artist, Mary McMenamin. And she was actually able to present to us an option to replicate the actual art piece and paint that. But she also informed us that she could not physically paint that. So she, she recommended that we would hire her to create the artwork digitally and then transpose that onto a wrap and then wrap the actual boxcar. That was the original suggestion by the artist. There had been a lot of discussion and debate in relation to rap versus the mural and that's why I'm here today to present to you several, a couple of options as it relates to the discussion we had with the Heritage Arts. as it relates to the discussion we had with the Heritage Arts. I also want to note, in these options, you'll notice here on these pictures is the pedestal. This is the informational kiosk that gives you sort of the history of the boxcar and the mural itself. In all these options, that pedestal or that kiosk is in bad condition. So we are recommending that in these options, that be replaced to include the history of what has taken place with the decision that we move forward with. So first recommendation actually is to do not commission the, or do not hire Mary McMenamin to recreate the artwork. However, just replacing the pedestal, the information, documenting the history of the kiosk, and just preserving the boxcar in the original state that it is existing there now. So just documenting all the history and replacing the kiosk. And that price range is about estimation of about $6,000. And leaving the boxcar in its current condition, as you see in the bottom picture there. Second option is identifying or commissioning a new artist to create a new concept or mural to be painted on the boxcar. This actually would require to obviously have more discussion of what image do we now want to put on the boxcar. We would then decommission or deaccession the actual Santa Fe Springs Oranges mural that did once exist. We are already planning our to identify that in the historical information on the kiosk. And then, of course, replace and recreate the exhibit with that timeline of from the start to finish, perhaps with a new mural. Now, this range right here would be anywhere from $16,500 to $45,800. And the reason for that is I did do some homework in relation to additional artists that were out there. We have Candace Galván, who actually has done a lot of work for us with the traffic signal boxes, has the ability and the experience to do more murals. She arranged, she provided an actual quote of approximately little over $9,000. That the additional cost, of course, would be for the kiosk as relates to the historical, the history and the documentation of that. Then I also met with artist Evo Vigara. He's a actually international artist, a muralist. Does great work. That image there you see with the blue and the various colors is actually in Venice alongside of a building. The monkey, I believe, is in Spain. So that he does have that ability and capability of recreating a variety of different opportunities. He's more on the expensive side. His quote to repaint the entire boxcar is about $38,000. If you add the kiosk on top of that, you're looking roughly about $45,000 or so. Excuse me. Let me go back one here. Whoops. Thank you. The option three is to continue with the commissioning and hiring of Mary McMenamin to recreate the existing art piece that you see there, the Santa Fe Springs Oranges, to actually have her recreated digitally, to actually also then transpose that. And then we will actually send that out to a wrap company to then have the wrap company install that on the actual boxcar. And then again, of course, to include the kiosk information with the history of that transition. I will share. Excuse me, sorry. The wrap is estimation to actually wrap the boxcar is approximately $5,000 to $7,000. I received a couple of different price quotes on that. Mary McMenamin's cost roughly is about $32,000 to $250,000 in her cost. And then, of course, the cost with the actual kiosk. The lifespan of a wrap ranges from five to seven years. The artwork can range anywhere from 15 to 20 years, the painting of that. Little other history of the work. The original cost of the art piece of the Santa Fe Springs Oranges at that time in 1995 was $30,000. There was only one restoration completed in 2007 for about $26,000, about $27,000 total. Between 2007 and now, it didn't have any type of, thank you. Bad cough, I'm apologizing. Yes.
Question, so the original artist, Mary, her everything's $42,500. Candace, who we're very happy with doing all the other stuff, how much does her cost?
She proposed to actually do the mural for a little over $9,000.
And Mary is?
Mary, with just the recreation of the artwork, was $32,250. Just to recreate it. And I will, we have different levels of, I mean, artwork is very subjective. So you know, you do have some talented individuals out there that, you know, are willing to.
Good, no, good. Is there any way that we can just do a citywide, you know, photo or drawing that maybe, you know, somebody from within our own city can, to do a contest like we did before and just, you know, that winner, we can do that rap of that project? You know, because I know that we've had some of our, the little electrical boxes already tagged on. I think anytime they see law enforcement, they have a tendency to cross it out, but, you know, which is sad to say. So if anything, you know, I mean, it's pretty expensive just for her to say $32,000, you know, and the recreation. So, I mean, I, the question is, how much do we want to spend? But I'm more comfortable, if it's going to be something that we create, I would rather have, you know, one of our residents or any of our, you know, partners that are, or even employees that want to create something, then we just go from there.
I just, I just want to remind council as well, you just want to think long-term maintenance as well. That's the other, the other challenge that we face and we're currently facing with a lot of our public art pieces.
And I think on Councilman Zamora's point of view is, if you do a contest, doesn't it mean five, seven years, years from now, we do another contest and we keep updating?
Exactly.
You know, we keep up, keeping the art.
You're recycling the same system instead of paying out. So, I mean, you know, in the end, when you see $45,000, you're.
But does, doesn't the Heritage?
So, so we, for the fiscal impact, we actually currently are, but it is part of the Heritage Arts Fund, and we currently are budgeted for restoration of artwork. And so whatever approach we take, that is covered under the Art Fund.
So I have a question. So when was this painted, '95?
Yes.
So it was painted '95, and we had one restoration to it?
One major restoration.
But the restoration, the reason why we had to take it out was because of the rotting of the wood that we didn't take care of? It wasn't because the art was damaged?
Correct. So at the, at the time, the intent was to try to replace a work on the restoration of the original art piece.
Yes.
But we found that the boxcar had to go. And fortunately, that art piece had to go.
So the art piece would still be in good condition if the?
No, it was actually in pretty bad condition at that time, yes.
It's pretty hard to keep the wood restored with painting on it.
Yeah.
Right? It, you kind of have to take one off to fix the other.
What's the art committee's, the hack committee's recommendation?
Their overall, there is a lot of discussion and debate regarding that. Their overall decision was really trying to maintain the art and the painting of such approach. Either way, that, but also they want to maintain the historical component of that and include the history of everything that's transpired over the years for that area.
I think it's, you know, we're looking at the price tag, and I think our businesses put into this to have art.
Yeah.
I don't think, you know, art is what we want to make of it, right? Painting or digital, I think it's, it's the message that we're trying to put on there to give the people what they want to see. I don't think that either way is a wrong way. I mean, if we wanted to go, you know, Councilman Zamora's way of, you know, getting our community involved in history, then, you know, you have kids that can maybe design something, and we can digitize it ourselves. It's not going to cost $32,000 or $42,000. It would be a kind of a cool thing that we do. And having the kids do that, and every seven years, if it does fade, then we can redo it and have new kids put something to their.
They can even do it at the library, do a project out of the library.
I, I think that's a really cool aspect of it. And painting is always a great aspect of it, but I just think that it's the message that we want to send out and how we put it out there. It's gonna, nobody's gonna know the difference if it's painted or if it's, it's the message that we want to send and how we get our kids involved, so.
And I think you'd be able to preserve the orange harvest by a plaque, like you said. Putting a picture of what it did look like alongside it with a history of the boxcar. And as history, things change. And I think the idea of, Mr. Councilmember Zamora has a great idea, gets a community involved with the historical aspect of it, and then we have more control over it, too.
As those designs change, we can preserve those somewhere so they can see how it's changed over time and the different art pieces that have been on that boxcar.
We could bring it up.
The wrap?
Great idea. Now, let's see what.
So would that be to bring direction back to the council?
So.
The directions before the council. You have a recommendation from the hack. It's before the council for direction for staff. You can, you could direct us to go back to the hack or you can decide to give us direction now.
Yeah, I mean, I'll give the direction because it's not a motion, right, technically, to pretty much the concept of getting our community involved and then us doing it digitally, like in whatever means a rap style.
I think it would be better for us to incorporate a motion into one of your recommendations, which would probably be the one.
But if we do that, we'll make sure that we are, we still have the last say of what is drawn on there, not just.
Yeah, you guys would have a pick of what, maybe have the final.
So I would need a motion to direct staff to do a art contest and bring that, bring the selections back for approval and then have that replicated on the boxcar.
Yeah, so could we get a motion to?
What Renee said.
Yeah.
I'll move.
What Renee said?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that will include also the updating of the.
The update of the pedestal.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. So the pedestal and then whatever the wrap.
On the pedestal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you could even have, you know, the community still even, you know, when it comes to the pedestal, they could even design that if we have to, you know?
Sounds good.
Maybe an orange or a boxcar, smaller version.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency, City Council Consent Agenda. We have a total of 15 consent items, 13 through 27. Is there a motion for an approval of consent calendar?
I'll move 13 through 27.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. All right, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Martin.
None tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
None tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Zamora.
None tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem Rounds?
None tonight, Mayor.
And I have none. Council comments, AB 1234, Council Conference reporting. Councilmember Zamora.
I just want to thank all of you guys for, you know, staying here this long with us. And I think this is probably one of our longest meetings in.
Yeah.
In a while, so.
Good job, sir.
You know, so those who put the agenda in order, thank you. Other than that, I mean, you guys know that we've had some really valid points come up today. I mean, AJ, you know, the traffic has been, has been a detriment to our community. I think what we should do also is incorporate some kind of, you know, study, study session or study, you know, where we can all talk about certain other areas that we know and, you know, within our, because I know in front of the Hyo Patrol Station, they have that crosswalk that, you know, sooner or later, it's, it, it's, there's factors there that we need to look at. So I think we should just look at it as a whole and then maybe everybody through the Traffic Commission or just in general can bring up their ideas and their concepts of what we should probably see and do. I do agree with the lights. Even on Telegraph and Orange Day, when you make that right turn going southbound, it does, you know, you have people, many people making the left turns, and it doesn't allow anybody to make a right turn, so it makes it pretty difficult. So other than that, it's great to see everybody here. We do have a great event coming up, you know, next week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I found out that we have to be there early. And, you know, so, you know, and Jay's gonna be speaking in Spanish, so that's gonna be great. So practice the word Ahua and what.
See. Done.
Drop the mic from there. Also, when it comes to our residents, you know, where we have a seven to seven timeframe of, you know, when work should be done, I mean, whatever we can do just to look at just the timeframe itself. I know they're probably on their final stage, but still, you know, better late than never, you know, to look into it and see, you know, what the, what Malia Holmes is doing actually themselves just to check into it. And I know that we've had other speakers speak, and it's great to see that, you know, how people get involved and, you know, just to check into what we're doing as a whole. So, I mean, I just know that we live in a great city. And, you know, and Lee Squire, you know, just the fact that just the public, the Purple Heart, I mean, just, you know, our veterans, I mean, we can't just thank them enough. I mean, I mean, they, they paid the ultimate price, and it's just, it's just heart-wrenching to know that their families are still living with those struggles. And, you know, whatever we can do to always help out our veterans. So other than that, you guys have a great night. God bless, and see you this week.
Councilmember Martin.
I need to report, I was at the JPIA with also HR. I'm part of JPIA, so when it was, actually, I felt kind of, it was pretty cool because a lot of the topics were promoting collaboration between the council and your staff, promoting collaboration between the council and the residents. And a lot of the stuff that these cities had, we can actually, we don't have here. And it was really good to say that, okay, that didn't involve us, that didn't involve us. So it was actually pretty good. I mean, me and, like I said, HR staff and Maribel were there. And it was kind of funny, we had that this guest speaker was Mark Schulman, who I swear, he thought he was like the number one drummer there was, and no one knew who he was at all. But he swore he was huge. And he brought a good point, it's like, always, his thing is, we have to do this. No, it's be thankful that we can do it. Just have a different perspective of stuff. And, and we do, I mean, I'm very happy and proud to be up here with, with four or five of us here, that all of us here, we love to do what we do. And it's because of residents that we do, and we love it. It's not always good, it's not always the best. And we don't have everybody speaking, and everybody's happy about what we do, but we do our best, and we do it with heart. And I'm very proud to be up here with you guys, so thank you. I had a very good comment. Joanne Madrid, who used to work for the city many years, was at the Lantern, the event this past Friday. She said that, the Lantern Tour, and she said that Heritage Park has not looked as good as it does in many years. So thank you, whoever's in charge of that. Lantern Tour was awesome, it was great. I said, I think we almost got kicked out from there because we were too scared. Jay's daughter Sophia was better than all of us put together. We are a small and mighty city. I mean, look at what we're doing with Whole Child, something that no one else has anywhere, and we're doing it here. Jorge Morales coming in to speak today says so much about Renee, and that just, that speaks wonders because when we were getting the tour of Whole Child, this man was running down the street, catching, running in a suit with a hard hat, catching a guy that was stealing mail. I mean, this guy is, does everything. So thank you so much, Renee, for being who you are. You're the state of the city, great job, Jay. You did awesome. Stop talking, I'm talking.
I didn't say nothing.
Great, I mean, it was packed. It was, it was awesome. Rick Brown, I don't know if you're doing it or who's doing the, I was walking on Orange Day, she's on Jersey, and I saw the flags. That is awesome to see those at the end. It was really good to see that, getting close and seeing it. And Mr. and Mrs. Nakamura, we always promised you as a city, we will always keep Paul's memory here. And all of us here are always, always doing that. And I don't know if you checked it out, but they redid the, or they actually cleaned it up, the Paul's stone outside, and just say, it'll always be fresh, it'll always be updated. And we always promise you that us here will always make sure Paul's memory never dies. So thank you again for doing what you're doing. Whittier PD, I know we had some negative speaking right now, but I stand behind my Whittier PD. Thank you for what you do and all our law enforcement. I have to say sheriff, too, just because, you know, my husband. But knowing, I mean, we got someone saying something, I really doubt that that was our officers. And I stand behind you, and I know we all do here. So thank you for what you guys do. And Chief, same thing with fire, so thank you. And on that note, happy Halloween. Okay, I'm done.
I didn't say anything, so.
Okay, I'm done.
Can't yell at me.
Have to, I have to make up for all those little times, you know? I only have you for a couple of months. Oh, one thing, real quick, sorry.
Oh, man, now you said you were done.
Chamber. No, Chamber. We promote and we say Chamber is great. Let me tell you, I just got a vehicle from Mark. Let me tell you, I just got a vehicle from Mark. The connection that Chamber has with our businesses and our city, the collaboration that we have, please, always go Chamber. If you have anything, check with Chamber and see what businesses we have that can collaborate with you, with, with what you're doing. So, Chamber, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Mark, thank you.
Are you done?
Happy wife, happy life. Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Okay. Oh, Mark, thank you for my car, too.
Thank you for mine, too, Mark.
Good evening, everyone. I just, I wanted to say about the state of the city. It was fantastic. I loved it, and I think, I know that we're going to do it every year now, but I wasn't expecting it to be so professionally done as it was. Well, this is Santa Fe Springs, of course, I thought it was going to be professionally done, but it was very nice. It had every, the way we started it off, the way we talked about everything that's going on in our city and all the people that were there, the businesses. Last time we, when we talked about the state of the city, we talked about it at the GBNC with residents that wanted to come. So, Mayor, you did a great job, and I liked the beginning, the middle part, which let everybody know everything about our city and the ending. Also, I wanted to thank our sponsors that, that were there, that gave to the state of the city, too. That's fabulous because not only do we have a fabulous event, but we have sponsors that pay for it, so great. Our library, spot on, just like what Juanita said, Deborah, Rea, and her staff are really bringing up that library and making sure that our kids and our residents have a great time there. I see a lot of our residents there with the Halloween specials and the puppet show. Because of that, my husband had to make a puppet show in our living room a couple of nights ago for our grandson. Yes, so he loved it, yes. And the Red Ribbon Parade, Rick, we're ready for that. It's, it's a great event for the kids, for the adults, you know, the way our residents come out and sit there and wait for it. This is something that we've been doing for years, and I think that it is just fabulous, there's such positivity that comes out of our city. Renee, that, that was so nice what you did. Just, this is what he does. I mean, he's, he's does so good at his job, but not only that, but when you save somebody's life, it's just a great thing. And then, you know, to get recognized for it. Thank you for being the person that you are, yes. And Irma, thank you for having your husband wake me up at six in the morning, but, you know, I understand what you're saying about, you don't like to be woken up like that, it's not fun. And I agree that if we can do anything to make sure that that doesn't happen, you know, we have our city manager that's doing everything he can, but hopefully that you don't have to be going through that. And all the residents that live next to you should not have to be waking up real early because somebody decides to, they want to get up early and, and finish the project early. So, with that, I just want to wish everybody a Happy Halloween and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I think you and I can just say ditto to everything, right?
I'm cool with that.
What do you think? But, no, the state of the city was a great event. Mayor, you did a great job. Renee, perfect. The, the project, the Whole Child and Habitat for Humanity and the Richmond Group, that's a project that we are all very proud of. As stated, there isn't another project like that in the state of California. So, not only, the city should be proud of it, the residents should be proud, that you're going to be on the map and we're going to be looked at and we're going to get a lot, a lot of kudos for that. And it was the support of the council to step up and step out of the box and do that project. Red Ribbon Parade, it's always a great event. Staff for the box car, it's discussed, you know, not only did they rebuild that box car and make it look like it did before, but if you remember, when the windmill was down, they couldn't get anybody that wanted to build that, and our staff took it upon themselves and they rebuilt that. So, we got a very creative staff, they got the backing of the council. Thank you for that. Hopefully, we'll see everybody at some point this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, at the Fiesta's. It's going to be a great event, a lot of, lot of entertainment, a lot of food, and just a lot of good times. And one thing, one last thing, Renee, I'd like to ask staff to start looking at, and it's long overdue, at our tree policy. We, our tree policy has been outdated for a number of years. There's been a number of issues that have evolved from that, and I think we, we should look at that and, and bring it up to the nineteen, or 2024 and not 20 years ago.
Mr. Mayor, can I just get consensus? So, you don't need to take a vote, but if I could just get consensus? Okay, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ditto, and we're good. First, I want to apologize to our Traffic Commissioner because I did not recognize him today, and I'm sorry, AJ, and, you know, it, it's a shame that we need to do a better job recognizing everybody that's here, and I'm sorry that we didn't do that to you, and I, I want to apologize to you. But I thank you for what you do for us and, you know, day in and day out. And just like you said, you, you report something that you find, and that's very honorable for you, and we need to honor you in that same manner. So, I, I thank you for that and welcome, and you're always here to support. Irma, and we talk about tree policy, I think we need to talk about our construction policy of not working seven days a week, seven to seven, holidays. We need to definitely, you know, talk about that and get something agendicized really soon because we should not be having our residents because our policy is outdated or we don't pay attention to it. We need to make sure that we do. So, if we could get that maybe agendicized, too, at the same. Overlooking our policy and making sure that we're not.
We're working with the city attorney, so if we can just get consensus to continue that work, our, our plan would be to bring back that new ordinance in November. So, it would be a Monday through Friday ordinance with the timeframe, and then a Saturday with a limited timeframe. Anything beyond that would need approval from the city.
Thank you. Our state of the city, I want to thank all of our sponsors, I want to thank all of the council, anybody that had went, thank you guys for the support. It was definitely a, a great time. It's, it's actually nerve-wracking for, for me because I'm not the, the politician that likes to be public speaking, and that's why you know I'm not a lifelong politician, because I don't want to do this forever. But it, it was great, and it was comforting because everybody I know there cared, and that's what it's all about for me. So, I thank you guys for what you guys did and your support. So, thank you, guys. Lee, if you're listening, watching, thank you. You're a true person that keeps every veteran's memory in, in the light of people to make sure that we don't forget where we came from. So, thank you very much for that. Our fire department, thank you for the open house, thank you for the Band-Aids, sir. I had a little boo-boo on my arm and fire came and fixed me up. Thank you, sir. You act like you knew what you were doing, too, buddy. What else? Renee, you know, there's not much I can say that we probably already haven't said over and over and over, but I think we've got it right, and you are really taking our city to a new level. You are just a very human person that really cares for people and cares for us. I thank you for what you do on a day-in and day-out basis. We would not be here, so thank you, sir. With that, Happy Halloween, see you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick note.
Aw, man, you, too?
You're gonna, you're gonna adjourn to the November 12th meeting, just to give the public kind of an announcement of why we're doing that. We have a election, which falls on Tuesday, which is the day of our next scheduled council meeting. We really want people to get the vote, so we're going to move our meeting a week after that, so that's why you are adjourning, actually, two weeks after that, right, to the, to the following week. So, that is why we are adjourning to November 12th.
Says it right here, sir. I was going to do it. See, man? I was, it says it right here. Thank you, guys, have a good night. Go Dodgers.
Can you please adjourn to?
Now, you want me to say it? You did it.
I'm not a.
I would like to adjourn this meeting to November 12th, 2024. Six o'clock.